Okay, good evening, everyone. If everyone wants to grab their seats and start making their way to their tables, we will get started. Okay, I don't know if I get too close to this thing, does it? I'm gonna stand, and this is really good, this mic is really sensitive. Okay, all right, I'd like to call this work session and final markup for the fiscal year 2024 budget to the Prince William County School Board to order. Notice of electronic participation pursuant to school board policy 139. School board member participation in the meetings by electronic communication. School board member Diane Rollson may participate in this meeting through electronic means from her home due to a medical condition that prevents her physical attendance. If so, the clerk will so note in the minutes of the meeting. Moving on to the approval of agenda, a motion is in order. Mrs. Wall.
Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Latif, I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the meeting agenda as recommended.
Do you have a second?
Chairman.
Ms. Argarpur, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, just signal with your hand. Aye. All those opposed? No opposition. The motion passes. Thank you. We will begin tonight's work session and final markup with an opening remarks from our superintendent, Dr. McDade, followed by any updates from John Wallingford, our chief financial officer. I will then share the ground rules for the markup and we'll begin, we'll open the meeting up to board members for discussion. Following tonight, the board will vote to approve the final budget for fiscal year 2024, next week's meeting on March 15th. At this time, I'll turn things over to Dr. McDade. Dr. McDade?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
The budget and school division leadership worked together to develop this budget, which continues to support our four-year strategic plan, 2025 Launching Thriving Futures. On February 1st, our team submitted the fiscal year 2324 proposed budget to the full school board. The school board then held a public meeting on the proposed budget on February 6th and a public hearing on February 15th. And tonight, we will conduct a work session for the final markup of the fiscal year 24 budget. On March 15th, we'll be bringing forward the proposed budget to the school board for consideration for approval, as well as the capital improvements program, which will then be submitted to the Board of County Supervisors for their consideration later this spring. And as always, I just want to thank the board for your partnership and all of the work that we've done collaboratively on this budget. Like last year, all of the work that we've done has been driven by our strategic plan. We made a commitment to all of our stakeholders that our priorities would drive our investments, and we are staying true to that in this year's budget as well. We do have some previously communicated uncertainty in the state budget, so I do want to first start with some updates from Mr. Wallingford. He'll share some additional information that we've received that'll inform our budget process moving forward because it will have implications beyond this evening, so we have some updates there. We also have some additions to present tonight from what was proposed earlier because as a part of our budget process, as you all know, the full board does evaluate and analyze the budget very carefully. And I want to thank each of you for the extensive feedback that you've provided on this budget, in addition to recommendations that were made on ways that we can further align with the strategic plan and investments that to be considered for the proposed budget. So you'll see a lot of that feedback in some additions tonight that we're bringing forward in direct response to some of the critical feedback that we've gotten from the board. I know that it's been a lot of time and effort that you've spent on this process, and we really appreciate the partnership that we have with you in making sure that we are not only being fiscally responsible, but that we are committed to the vision of Prince William County and fulfilling our strategic plan. So at this time, I'm going to have John come forward and share some quick updates, as well as share the additional investments that are being proposed for markup tonight based on feedback that we've gotten from the full board.
Thank you, Dr. McDade. Excuse me. Thank you, Dr. McDade, Dr. Latif, members of the board. I'm gonna provide... Thank you, Jim. I'm gonna provide you with a brief update, some of this information you saw at our last board meeting, and then I'm gonna provide, like Dr. McDade mentioned, just a couple of items for context. So county revenues. Last week, on the 28th, the county Board of Supervisors got together and they, their county executive, proposed their budget for fiscal '24, and we learned a couple of things that we did not know. The first is, they adjusted the revenue forecasts that we worked together on to the extent of impact to the schools of about $14.8 million. Like I said, that came out just this past week, and that is at a tax rate of 977. Okay, so that was proposed and will be advertised, those rates will be advertised this week in the local press. One thing of interest is the fact that the computer and peripheral tax was increased for the purpose of advertising their tax rates by 35 cents to 21.5. That generates for Prince William County schools about $5.6 million, should that total amount be shared. It's about $280,000 per penny on that tax rate. And so, the one thing I'd caution here is, during the conversations the board had last week, they were reasonably clear that there is some expectation that because of that increase in computer and peripheral tax rate, that there is, I would say, a reasonably high likelihood that they're gonna come down a penny on the real property tax rate, which will effectively negate that additional $5 million to us. So I wanted to share that with you because it's something they spoke about last week, but I think the likelihood that we see that money is reasonably low. The next line here is state revenues. We went through this last week, but I'll go through it again briefly. On the 25th of this past month, on February, the General Assembly adjourned Sunny Dye and passed what they're referring to as the skinny budget. And they're referring to it as the skinny budget because they really didn't address the issues that they went to conference with. As you're aware, the House produces amendments to the governor's introduced budget. The Senate produces amendments to the governor's introduced budget. That was introduced in December, I think on the 16th. And the House and Senate then go to conference. The conferees get together and they try to reconcile the differences between those two sets of amendments. Because they couldn't resolve their differences, they passed a budget that listed a couple of items that they felt necessary to get done, and we're still left wondering what the final product will be. So the point of this is that there's a high level of uncertainty this year, similar to the past couple of years. It's a situation where normally I'd be able to tell you what we thought the revenues were today, but right now, we're uncertain. One or two other points about what's happened in Richmond over the past week or so. They did pass, like I said, a skinny budget that did change the numbers somewhat. The detail to those numbers really haven't been released yet. Our expectation is that there are reductions, but we're not certain what those numbers are right now. We'll be coming forward with those as soon as we receive detail from VDOE. Now, we have received the detail for fiscal '23. We haven't received the detail for fiscal '24 yet. Finally, one last point on hold harmless and the math mistake that our friends at VDOE made. Okay, if you recall, there was a $4.3 million error in fiscal '23, the current fiscal year. There was a $10.7 million error in the numbers that they provided us that we used to build the fiscal '24 budget. A total error of roughly $15 million. Okay, we have not really been held harmless to those numbers. We won't know the answer to that, though with certainty, until we get both the '23 and '24 numbers from VDOE, number one. And number two, until the conferees get back together, the General Assembly has a special session and they actually resolve the budget. And so, we don't know that right now. We will keep the board up to date as we proceed. So what we will do is, we'll present to you the proposed budget, the numbers that you have seen for state, federal and county revenues. We will make that proposal if we don't learn what the real numbers are by the time we get to next week, March 15th. We'll move forward and adopt the budget based on the numbers we have, and then when we get full information, we'll come back to the board, and this is something we've done recently in the past couple of years. We'll come back to the board with updates to the budget based on the new numbers. So just a couple of items to kind of address some of the uncertainty. I want to provide a little context. Over the past five years, what you will have seen, what our employees have seen, is a 5%, a 2.8%, a 5%, a 7%, and then a 5% raise for the years fiscal '20 through fiscal '24. That 5% raise is what is built into our budget currently. You're probably all aware that both the House amendments and Senate amendments proposed an additional 2% raise. That is an issue that we will address when we get the final numbers from the general, excuse me, the special session that will take place. The bottom box there, you see, same period, '20 through '24. Our health insurance increases have been over the past five years, 0% in '20, 0 in '21, 0 in '22. We had a 2% increase last year, and we will have a 3% increase in '24 should that budget pass. So to provide a little context to both the health insurance and the salary increase, we periodically put together something like this to provide this context. If there's a 5% raise this year on average, and again, I want to stress the word average, on average, you would expect to see a little bit less than a $5,000 salary increase for teachers. The proposed health insurance increase at 3%, at 3%, that insurance increase would be $291 annually. So to make the, again, to provide context, if we're gonna have a 5% raise, which is the numbers built into the proposed budget, the health insurance increase, if you take that into account and adjust the salary increase, we're looking at a 4.94% salary increase after the adjustment for health insurance cost increase to the employee. So again, this is just to provide you context, and this is for one group of employees, it's not for the whole, obviously for the whole employee base. We have people on grades, you know, one all the way up to 21, 22, and the impact to each person individually would be a little bit different. Last point I'd make here, that $291 intentionally taken is the most expensive cost increase an employee will see. It's not average, it's not what we would expect most folks to see, but that is the most expensive cost increase for health insurance. Finally, one last item before I turn it back to the board and to Dr. McDade, is I just wanted to review our debt sale numbers over the past five years and put the numbers up in front of you, and there are two or three points I'd like to make. One is, you can see that we've had reductions in two years of about $30 million for each year, okay? You can see the debt sales, those amounts, 126, 24, 15, the last two years, 64 and 44. We thoughtfully reduced those amounts by $30 million each, okay? And on the rightmost column, something called true interest rate, interest or interest cost, between 2.9% on the V18 and historic lows on the V20 and V21 at 1.4 and 1.6. We will see those rates climbing over the next year or two or three. So again, just to provide a little more context. And finally here, and Dr. McDade, I think will make some comments about this, these are the additional items that Dr. McDade is bringing to you at markup. Then I'll just walk through them quickly and list them off for you, and then, like I said, I think Dr. McDade may want to go through, make some comments. The first item you see is Unified Sports. That will cost about $45,000. Bus cameras, again, this is a result of feedback we got from the board. Special education teacher stipend, that is a $1,000 stipend for special ed teachers. That's an item that we're still working on some of the details on, but an expected cost of about $1.2 million. Coaching supplement study, to take a look at the supplementary pay amounts we have that you can see in our budget manual, one of the things we'll be doing is adding $60,000 to the budget to have a consultant come and take a look at those and provide us with some information towards making changes on those. Student activities participation, $14,000 that will go to schools on a needed basis. Non-traditional sports expansion, $501,000 for a variety of sports that are non-traditional, they're not baseball, they're not football, those kinds of things. And then, finally, you can see CI coach contract change, that's an item that we should have built into the budget, we're adding it now. It's a contract extension from 223 days to 250 days for our continuous improvement coaches that help guide our continuous improvement process. Dr. McDade?
Just bringing forward that the, this, the process to come to these additional investments is based on areas where board members identified after thoroughly reviewing the budget, additional opportunities to support areas that are areas that are need based on feedback. In what we committed to, not only in the strategic plan, but feedback from, you know, constituents. For example, the Unified Sports is a huge successful program within the county, and we're excited because we want more high schools to participate in that. But, you know, financial resources have been somewhat of a barrier for some programs, and so that was brought forward by board members, and so we put an additional line item there. I do want Dr. Flannard to speak a little bit about the special education stipend. That came from concerns that board members have about caseloads and documentation and planning for meetings, et cetera, and so Dr. Flannard will kind of clarify what we're doing with the stipend there.
Good evening and thank you. The proposal that is before the board this evening is for special education teachers that are really the case managers, so these are the people that really start the process from beginning to end. They would be in charge of the agendas and sending out the invitations and gathering all of the information, making sure all the team members are present. So it's the bulk of the work. That is the current proposal.
And then, an additional item where you see the student activities participation, just to give a little bit of context behind that. We did have concerns from one of our board members around students being able to participate where financial resources are a barrier for them and where waivers can be submitted and increasing the level of division support for that. So that's what that $14,000 is for. The non-traditional sports expansion, this is something also in our strategic plan where we committed to expanding non-traditional sports so that we could have more student interests being addressed within the school division. A couple of things here, you'll see bowling, for example, which is a lot of interest there, and now all of our schools offer that. Crew is another where there's some needed supports for crew because it is a very expensive sport, especially for competition. And then, one that I'm really excited about, esports, because the VHSL does now offer esports for state competition, and so we want to bring that to the school division, which is also some hefty costs there, so that's why you see this investment. We do believe that all of our students have different talents and interests, and we don't want any student to not be able to participate because we're not offering something. So we're continuing to evaluate interest and expand our offerings, so I do want to thank the board members that brought forward some of these concerns around expanding, taking advantage of the opportunity just to expand that this year. And then, John did talk about the contract changes, but I wanted to just give a little bit of background context for why some of these investments are being brought forward. That concludes our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thank you, Dr. McDade and Mr. Wallingford. I think it's important to note that board members have had previously, and I think as Dr. McDade points out, you know, we meet every couple of weeks, but it's important for everyone to know that the board members work really hard in those times we're not meeting, and those, that includes meeting with constituents. And so, you know, how does a budget process work? Constituents meet with members, they, you know, whether it's community members, whether it's teachers, whether it's students, asking board members about concerns they have for budgets, and those board members convey those concerns throughout the year to Dr. McDade. Dr. McDade puts together the proposed budget each year based on what she hears, primarily as you heard, as you all heard from the strategic plan, but then also from what she hears from board members. We look at the proposed budget and we give feedback to the superintendent. She's presented some changes here, and so I, we really appreciate it, but I do want to thank the board for working really hard throughout the year on this work that goes into getting the information from the constituents, your constituents, the members of the community, the people in the school divisions, to the superintendent, and any ideas you may have that you may believe will benefit, so, benefit the system. So I do appreciate all of the hard work each of the board members have done as we put this together. It's not, it's not easy. So, at this point, you know, thank you for sharing those additions and revisions. We're gonna start by going around the table. Each board member can have some opening comments, and then after that, we will follow a process where board members will offer proposed changes that might not have been previously shared. And if there is a change, change must be moved and seconded, followed by discussion and a vote. No board member may speak twice about a budget change unless and until all board members have spoken once about it. After all board member, after all board's comment, after all board members' comment is complete, the matter will be called for a vote by the chair. So these are the ground rules we normally use every year. A change will be offered and voted on at that time. Should there be any changes, they will be compiled and a final vote on the budget will, all changes incorporated will be taken. Likewise, should there be no changes to the proposed budget, a final vote will be taken to accept the budget as presented. Board members are not so bound, but otherwise pledged to each other not to offer amendments to the budget in open session as being duplicative of the work session's efforts, allowing for a straight up or down vote on the budget that is reflected in the final vote of the work session. Board members may make any comments or discuss changes offered in the work session in open session. So, okay, we'll start with opening comments. Why don't we start, who would like to go first? You want me to go in a circle, or anybody want to volunteer? Okay, Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Dr. McDade. Thank you, Mr. Wallingford and staff for compiling this comprehensive budget. As comprehensive as it is, I think it's fairly succinct. I think, as we've discussed, a lot of the funding that we have available is filling gaps for federal funds that are no longer available to fund things like our elementary security assistance, or the additional resources that we have there, or our community liaisons at our schools. These are things that when I go out and visit my schools and speak to like my principals, these are definitely things that they feel have had a positive overall impact in their building. So I'm happy that we are able to fund those areas and keep those in our schools rather than pulling out a bunch of positions and taking away a bunch of people's jobs. Those are big. You know, I also think, you know, I know we talked today, and one of the growing sports and popularity is the crew. There's seven active programs in our high schools, and just full disclaimer, we have no jurisdiction over the lake and the boathouse. I know people would love us to build a brand-new boathouse and stuff, that is not our purview. But one thing we can do is, I'm happy we were able to provide those additional supplemental funds for those non-traditional sports. I think that's important. I'm also happy to see, you know, as a parent of a special needs child, I'm happy to see the additional stipend for those. Some areas, in previous years, I might have just thrown out a motion and said, "I want this, I want that." I'm not gonna do that. But one thing I do want the board to think about is, you know, when we talk about like our CIP, one area of concern I've brought up before is the equitable resources that are in Dumfries Elementary. I understand we have a renewal process in our CIP. I can't go back and fix what happened 10-plus years ago, I was not on the board, but what I'm hoping is we can look and investigate how much money did go into that process, what are things that were possibly left off at that time, because I'm concerned about just the sheer size of things like their cafeteria, their gym, they don't have a loading space, so all their supplies are literally in part of their gym. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention those concerns, and I know we've talked about that, but, you know, that is something, you know, another area, I often, you know, another area I'm kind of also looking at is making sure our schools that are just on the border of being Title I but not, they still have those coaches and resources, and I know these are goals of ours, I'm just vocalizing things. So that's an area, I've talked to a couple of my principals who are near the bubble, but they're not there, and there's concern that potentially they might, you know, like lose a reading coach, but they're just close enough where they almost have those numbers to get all those resources that, you know, the funds from the federal government does help fill with Title I schools. So that's another one. You know, the, I know another area I brought up is, you know, I know we have been compensating our people, our people who have to stay for bus duty and that, and I know this year, we didn't pay the first three weeks just because we were trying to figure out a motion and process. I just hope, you know, next year that we're prepared, if teachers have to cover shifts the first three weeks or something, that we are able to compensate them for that time. And so, and then, like I said, as we're talking about additional funding that may or may come, I think Mr. Wallingford said it best, to possibly look at putting it more into our teachers to increase that 5% to a higher number. So that's my, those are my opening statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Ms. Jessie?
First of all, I want to thank you for the process. I think this has changed tremendously under your leadership, Dr. McDade, and I really appreciate the fact that you give us a form and we put our input into that form, and that you're responsive. And I also appreciate, although it doesn't seem like a lot, when you make a phone call and say, "Did you, you know, let's go for what your wishes were," because that personal call really means a lot to me. You know, in the budget, I want to thank you for, also for addressing my concern about science labs in these schools at a lack of equity. I know that there is a study, I asked for a study and that's in there, so Vern, I guess you'll be doing that. I'd like to have a date on that, if you could, down the road, I'd like to have that. As I've talked to teachers and principals and people outside of my area, the biggest concern, it's not a budget item, it's just that people are stressed, the testing is overwhelming, and I requested data rates, and I understand that you cannot provide data rates. As a principal, when I felt stressed in the building, sometimes I would send a floating sub into a classroom and give people a rest. I don't know what you can do along those lines. Perhaps principals can consider it in their budgets, but I think that there's an extensive amount of testing, especially at the elementary level, where you are a generalist and you're teaching language arts, math, social studies, science, you have to test all of those areas. You have the new tests coming from the state, and of course, we have our own tests, but, you know, my feeling is one test is too much if it doesn't guide instruction. So I think we're maybe in a test and send mode. It's not a budget item, but it is something that I think on a local level, I'd like to see the principals really to consider that. Celebration of teachers. I, you know, I asked for a mental health day when I was in Chicago State Hospital. I wasn't in there, by the way, but I worked there, although my husband did pick me up there. But one of the things that they did, because we were in a stressful situation, they had a one day where you could just take a mental health day. You called in and say, "I need a day off." And I know you can't afford it, but I think somewhere we need to look at celebrations of teachers and maybe quarterly, I don't know, I don't want to get into a specific, but my sense is that there is a great deal of stress out there, and of course, it's not in the budget, I'm not asking for it tonight, but I think we need to think about retaining our teachers. I don't know, I saw some counties are giving... I don't know, I saw some counties are given a retention bonus of some kind, but we need to find some way of retaining teachers. I don't know if we have a, at this point, we should have some indication of whether or not we're going to be losing teachers, but I don't think we can afford to lose any good teacher. We can afford to lose ones that are not working, but we cannot afford to lose any good teacher. And I think something along that line for you guys to really think about. And I appreciate the process, and that ends my opening comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I want to echo the comment, some of the comments made by Ms. Jesse and Mr. Wilk. I do appreciate the budget and the process. This is year two for us on this new process, and it seems, just want to remind people that, you know, with this new administration, we're still streamlining things and continuously working to improve this for, for all stakeholders. And I really appreciate the time and effort and energy that has gone into this. Years prior, it was sort of like a dogfight, and now it's collaborative. And I'm sure our staff also appreciates not having to come up and testify for their existence as they had to do in previous years. So already, I think we're leaps and bounds ahead. I do share some of the same concern Mr. Wilk has for some of our older school buildings, but I understand that that is an intensive process, and oftentimes, it's about building codes and things that are sort of outside of our control. So I want the public to just be aware that it's not a matter of just adding on a wing or expanding a gym. Sometimes you really can't because there are rules and regulations that would prevent that from occurring. It's not that the division doesn't want to, but I do agree with Mr. Wilk that those are things that we should continue to look at. I am very impressed with the new plan to reevaluate how we view schools, and I'm excited to hear the results from that when they come down the pike. As far as some of the updates and additions from our concerns being addressed, I really truly appreciate us giving a nod to some of the non-traditional sports. I know bowling has been very big in our school division, and there's millions of dollars of scholarships for that sport. I've been invited to a few, so I can attest to how impactful that is, as well as crew, but especially for me, esports. I've been hounding that alarm for several years, because I know several young men who, who participate in esports and actually compete and have won money competing outside of the school division. So I know a lot, a lot of parents around my age are like, "Get off your Playstation," or "Get off your whatever," but there's serious money to be made for a lot of those students, and I hope that we can build a relationship further with George Mason and maybe come to some sort of collaborative relationship as they have a gaming center right near our governor's school, Innovation Park. So I know that that's something that a lot of our esports students would appreciate. I also really appreciate the dedication to funding for police at our events. Some schools end up paying a higher cost than others, so continuing to follow our lens of equity, I think is going to be very impactful to our base school budgets. In addition to that, one of the things that I, well, two things that I did not see, but I'm, I'm going to petition for next year and that, try to keep at everyone's forefront, is dedicated spaces in our buildings for music and arts and gifted, we still have some teachers on wheels, through no part of our own, but we've been under a lot of transition the past couple of years, trying to figure out how to use space, where to put students, how the shift from traditional textbooks and moving to laptops for everyone. So as we go through and review our CIP annually, I think that that might be something that we could take another look at. Another was discussion a while ago about having to keep some computer rooms because the state mandates that you test for certain tests in our buildings at computers, I guess hardwired, I'm not sure of the intricacy of that, but if it is possible to have students test at their desk or other spaces, and we can utilize that particular space in another way, I, I hope that we can look at that down the pike. And then the last thing that I want to advocate for, not in this budget, but to, to start the conversation, as I mentioned previously, is to look at a dedicated space for our robotics students to practice. We did bring home more awards than we had ever last year for Prince William County with robotics. I know we're in the process of doing that now, teams are on their way to Worlds, and that is something that I've heard not only from our students, but actually in the community as a program that's worthwhile for them, and they continue to utilize those skills in their professional career. Just a short little example, my son's dental assistant, and my son is terrified of the dentist, but turns out the dental assistant was a robotics student in Prince William County. So now I have a child who's less terrified of going to the dentist, you never know where it comes in handy, but just those conversations and saying how his, how problem solving and critical skill, critical thinking skills that he learned in that program help him now in his career, even though it's not in robotics. So I know that there's extra value to that, and it, and the popularity for those programs increase year over year, and some schools just don't have the space. And I, I can only imagine how far our teams could go if they had a dedicated space. So what that looks like, I don't know, but I think as we go for the future, that would be something worth considering. And the last thing, I just want to say to the division is to congratulate on really putting effort to put parent liaisons in our schools. They have just been instrumental. I've had a few in mind, but now that we are going to have them everywhere, they really are that key connection between the community and our schools that often, they're the first line of defense that parents come see in our schools. Sometimes they help with the English translation, different programming. For us as a board, I know a lot of the, the people who, individuals in buildings who take up some of the admin work of letting us know when events are, that falls on the parent liaison, and it frees our administrative staff to do other things that they really need to be doing. So I just want to say that, how much I appreciate that. And with that, that's my opening statement and my final statement, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Argarpur.
There, there we go, it's on. Thank you, Dr. Latif. Thank you, Dr. McDade, and the staff who worked so hard on preparing the budget, and board members who, we do work collaboratively. It's, you know, my first year on this board, it was sort of like, it was a little overwhelming because I felt like there was just sort of this yee-haw kind of attitude to it, and it's so much more organized, and it's getting better each time. Yeah. Well, it was, sorry, Adele, she's gonna. I, I think I just want to make a point that the budget can be a great tool to make changes in the, in the system, and one of the changes we're going to eventually need to make and talk about is a way to find planning time for teachers. It's a big deal. No one will ever say they have enough, because there's never enough. But a couple of thoughts I had, I know we're not doing it this year, but, and, and you have to build this. You can't just say, "Boom, next year, everybody's getting XYZ." But one of the, the thoughts that has come up that teachers and some administrators seem to, like at least in elementary school, is one way you could give teachers time is getting kids into another rotation of an encore, right? One of those encores could be STEM, STEAM, whatever you want to call it. Or alternatively, some schools have a math-science person who support the, the classroom teachers, so you could either have someone who's helping to either co-teach or plan, or takes the kids for an extra time and gets a rotation of something else in this, in, out of their days. But like I said, that's, I mean, I'm just going to pretend we have, what, 50 elementary schools and we need one person in each building? That's what, Mr. Wallingford, what, $5 million right there? You told me six, I was close, right? Yeah, so it's, it's a big lift, right? And you have to have the personnel. So I, I would like to see us building a plan toward it benefiting our kids and our teachers by doing something like that. If you didn't tune in last week, I did mention it's Music in Our Schools Month. ESSA, which is Every School Succeeds Act, which was passed under, I believe Obama's administration, counts music as a core subject. So it's a core subject, it's offered during the day, and every child, at least in elementary school and middle school, takes it up to the seventh grade. Over this year, I've heard from some of the music teachers that there's not enough instruments, which is a good problem to have. You don't want to have a kid lugging a string bass, or maybe even a cello back and forth, so you need extra instruments, right? Some instruments, we need to be able to have students borrow or rent out at a low qual, low cost to families, and there's not a big supply of them. It depends on whether the school already has them. I know I had some laying around my house, I donated them to some of our schools because I'm not playing trumpet anymore. So, so we need a, I think we need to look at that as an instructional program, because it is. It's a core subject, according to ESSA. It's offered during the day, which means all of our kids, at least up through seventh grade, have opportunity to take this. And we've been talking about how to expand robotics and crew and esports and all these other things, which are great, but this one, everyone gets to participate in for a little bit more, over half of their educational career. So that's something for the future to think about. I think, I think that's just my future, my future tense, I just wanted to get that out there. The rest of this, for the people who don't, you know, sit in our spaces all the time, the budget's big, right? But it, but any one of us doesn't know all the things, requires a lot of conversations, a lot of back and forth. I say the budget season starts as soon as this one's approved, the next one starts. So keep that in mind as you're making your requests. Making them today is a really kind of hard time to do it, so let's be forward-thinking. Thank you for all of the work you guys have done and the collaborative efforts from the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Argarpur. Ms. Jackson.
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I would, I agree with Ms. Argarpur that the budget season does seem to start today because a lot of the board members are advocating for things for the next budget. And also, it starts the summer before, because I know that, and I appreciate this, that we met during the summer and started the collaborative budget process then. The budget is something that you have to advocate for consistently and directly. It's an ongoing intensive ti, process the last months. And I'm just really thankful to those who helped curate, those who listened, those who answered questions, especially, I know I had a lot of questions, so thank you, and those who drafted this budget. I'm also very grateful to those who came to the budget hearings before today, the constituents, and the expertise, experience, financial stewardship, and commitment to the strategic plan, especially during a time when the budget has not been finalized by Richmond, as we get 50% from our funding from the state. So thank you, Mr. Wallingford and Dr. McDade, and to your whole team. I really appreciate it. I'm really looking forward to the conversations tonight, and I also support that a lot of the advocacy that my previous board members have mentioned, including like, you know, of course, raising funding and always being conscious about ways to retain teachers and increase salary. I do have concerns about enrollment and funding that maybe like offline, we could just talk about the impact and like low enrollment, and the bubble schools that Mr. Wilk mentioned, and the budgets and losing teachers, and I think it's like a larger conversation. I'm really thankful for the collaborative effort through the additions that were mentioned today, especially during a time during budget uncertainty. I feel that a lot of good change was added, and especially excited about, you know, the Unified Sports, the cameras, pilot, and the stipends for special ed teachers, and there were some other great things, and I'm just, I'm thankful for the collaboration and conversation, and I'm looking forward to further conversation tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank, start off by thanking staff for all of the hard work that went into the preparation of this budget. I can't begin to understand all of the many hours and levels of work that go into the development of this budget, but I do really appreciate the final product, and it looks, it looks good. Dr. McDade, I know your staff has spent many long months, in fact, you probably are already starting on next year's budget. And so I just wish to thank everybody. And I understand the uncertainty with, on the state level makes this very difficult because we put out a budget, but then we don't have the final amounts, we don't know for sure if we're going to be under or over, and I know that uncertainty creates a lot of extra work for everybody, so I just want to acknowledge that and appreciate that. I also want to say that I hope that the state revenues come through for us. I know there's other, there are other commitments that we have that, because we did this through a priority process, so certain things made it into this budget, and there are other things that still exist that are priorities, but maybe didn't quite get into this budget. So perhaps we'll be able to maybe do some of those things. I know it's a very tight year, especially with uncertainty in markets, costs of materials and goods and labor, so that affects our CIP, which we're also going to be voting on. But I did want to mention very quickly in my opening statements, I appreciate the additional items that are in direct response to board advocacy. As I look at the list, I can see, you know, different things that I've heard board members talk about with me over the course of the year. I can see things on there that I've talked with other board members about, things that concerns have been raised to me that we've talked about, and that maybe I didn't remember to put into the request, but they showed up in the request. So I do appreciate all of those conversations that we've had over the many months, just listening to each other, bouncing ideas back and forth, because I think, as I look at that list, I think it looks good. I want to highlight just a few. I am pleased to see an increased funding for Unified Sports. My experience with Unified Sports has been very positive. I feel like it is very, it brings students together, it helps students feel like they belong, and it's extremely positive for the social and emotional empathy-building opportunities that provides, so I'm really pleased to see that. I am also pleased about the evaluation for coaches' stipends. In my experience, there's so much variability from school to school, sport to sport, club to extracurriculars. I know from robotics alone, there's so much variability, and some of those positions, it's really difficult to find somebody who's willing to, who has the skills, who's willing to put in the extra time. So I think, but, but the kids benefit so much from those extracurriculars, whether it be sports or more academic-like Odyssey of the Mind or something like that. So I appreciate the additional resources. It's not, it's not a big amount in a $1.7 billion budget, it's really not that much, but it does make a difference. So, keeping in mind, like I said, it's a $1.7 billion budget, it's a huge amount of money. I think we should always keep in mind that this money is from tax revenues from hardworking people. They expect us to use it wisely and to invest it where we see our greatest needs are, in order to really build up a really strong public school system, because we all benefit, and the next generation matters to all of us, and that's our responsibility. So I feel like understanding, you know, in the budget process, as we look for things that we should continue, as we look for things that maybe we've been doing and maybe we shouldn't be doing anymore, maybe they've lived their usefulness, or other things that we should, that we are not doing, that we should fund, that we realize, well, best practices would require that we add this program, or we add this funding, or something like that, as our needs also change, because our population is changing. Anyway, those are, that's the extent of my opening comments. I appreciate, again, everybody's work, hard work on this budget, and I look forward to the rest of the evening.
Ms. Wall, thank you so much. John, for my opening remarks, just if you can go back to the slides, after the, the ones where you talk about the, the salary raises, and, and while you're doing that, I want to thank our Budget Director Kathleen Addison, our Finance Director Shaquille Youssef, and our Supervisor of Budget Natasha Valencia, and John, the rest of John's team, for all the hard work they've done, all the work that goes into putting this budget together, and the harder work that's going to happen between now and the General Assembly's final decisions, and the work that we need to do to finalize this as we also present it to the Board of County Supervisors. So just to, just to recap some of the things that I think everyone should remember is, you know, if we go back, was, was there one slide before this one? If you don't mind, John. Right there. So if you take a look over the, the last years of the school board's efforts, we have committed significantly to catching up for salaries with our region, regional competition. These increases have, have worked to our benefit. We, we continue to, as far as retention and recruitment, you know, our goals were to improve recruitment, improve retention, you know, the hardcore aspects of being able to do that is by adjusting salaries, and, and these salary adjustments over the course of the last four years, and even the years before that, there was a 5% raise in 2019 and, and 2018, so 2019 for sure. So those have helped us in our retainment percentages. I think Donna and Dr. McDade mentioned two meetings ago that we were better than the state average and better than the national average for our ability to retain teachers. And so we're working really hard at that. I, I'm very excited about the 0%, you know, the changes in healthcare premiums were zero for three years in a row. We've had some minor adjustments in those over the last couple of years because inflation has been really out of control. And I think, you know, I, I give a lot of kudos to our HR team, the HR team over at the county. We do self-insure, and this has been, these numbers, 00023, are because of good fiscal responsibility in this program, where our county and our HR team, and, and our HR team, you know, we make up the larger portion of the healthcare benefits of the county employees. And so that work is really, kudos to all of them for that amazing work. These are tremendous numbers, and, and you don't see these kind of numbers in every organization. If you go to the next slide, John, thank you. The, the importance of, you know, we, we have, we have a AAA bond rating from all the rating agencies. I think we're a triple triple, right? Is that right? One of 56 municipalities in the nation have that. That's on average, one per state or territory, right? So we are one of those, and, and that comes with having great fiscal responsibility, doing your self-insurance plan, giving raises, at the same time not, not increasing debt. So if you take a look here at this raise for this year, again, on average, we're So, if you take a look here at this raise for this year, again, on average for teachers, and folks, John has put up there, you know, about a $4, $4,900, $5,000 raise, the healthcare premium's going up about $291 on the, on the high end, and, and so, you're still looking at about a 4.94% raise, which is really good. And as Mr. Wallenford and Dr. McDade have pointed out, that might not be the end of it. We might be able to get to a 7% raise, and that's depending on whether the Senate side of the budget passes and the governor signs that, if that happens, which, you know, there are, it's probably a better chance than not, not happening, that, that we do get some of that, so we'll see. And so, we do believe it'll be somewhere between 5 and 7 that I think we can get to, and that'll be even better for our, all of our employees. Next slide, John. And, you know, again, when we talk about the AAA, this is really important for everyone to see, our borrowing, so that budget amount is what we said we'd plan to borrow. The actual debt amount's what we actually did borrow, and each of these last five years, it's been less than what we budgeted because we really worked hard in our CIP, and we never sacrificed projects in the CIP. It should be very clear to everyone that no projects were ever cut. We were able to save money. But in our CIP work session this year, and not to bring up some of the bad news, but there will be increases to the CIP just because of inflation. Inflation is really hurting construction. It's, it's really uncertain how much that's gonna be, that fluctuates even on a daily and a weekly basis. So, all these years of savings in our borrowing, off of the average, we used to borrow prior to, to, to the 2020 or 2019, what you have up there, we were borrowing about 100, between 110 and 120 million a year. We, we've significantly dropped that, but we may go back up to those numbers and maybe shoot past some of those and at a higher interest rate. So, those are the things we're watching at, watching for, but those, again, the triple, the, the bonding agencies, the rating agencies, take a look at that and say, wow, Prince William County Schools, which makes up the biggest part of the county budget, has done a great job with that. And so, you know, again, I want to recognize our finance team, Dr. McDade's team, they have won award after award each year for good budgeting, good fiscal responsibility. You know, just to wrap up my opening comments, again, I want to thank the board for all their work with their constituents and working with Dr. McDade on the things that they'd like to see in the budget. I'd like to echo a number of things, you know, I, I would love for every principal to be able to hire all the coaches they need and all the teachers and staff they need, and, and that is the work we are continuing to do. We are doing that much better in these last four years than we ever did in the years prior to that. We will continue to do that. We will look for dollars wherever we can find them and get them into the classroom. This budget does that, and I'm very proud to, to support this budget. Like I said, our retention continues to improve, we're gonna keep working on that. The adjustments to the budget, Dr. McDade, I echo the sentiments of, on the Unified Sports. I, I think my favorite tweets in the entire division are when our Unified Teams are tweeting about the work they're doing. I mean, I don't think there's a tweet, if you're not following our Unified Sports in the schools, please follow them, share them. They are some of the, the best, you will smile every time if you get an opportunity to go to some of those events, they are fantastic. I would, you know, I, I, short of mandating it for every school to participate, this is a good step towards getting there, and I think any investment in extracurricular activities is, is some of our best return on investment in the school division. So, I applaud the stipend study for, and I, I would ask, and I don't necessarily think we need to vote on it, but if Dr. McDade, if you could consider as part of that study, as you look at coaching stipends, but other stipends for extracurricular things, so whether it's robotics coaches or-
Yeah, that's included.
Chess teams, yeah.
It's included.
Okay, that's great.
Looking at all, the studies for all stipends.
All of those things. That would be fantastic, because if we can make some headway on that and, and get some of our schools who aren't doing that as much to do more of that, and if it takes dollars, we should do that. I mean, I, I really do believe that, and I can't thank you enough for that. Everyone should remember the vast majority of our budget, the vast majority goes to salary and benefits. We have very little to play around with on a given year. So, you know, while, while Jen Wall, Vice Chair, mentions that, you know, it's a big budget, it really is a massive budget, but most of it, 92, 93% of it goes to salaries and benefits. We don't have any say on that. We can't, you know, choose not to spend that or, or spend it a different way. Those are set in stone, and so, the work we're doing is really on that 7, 8, 9, 10% of that budget, and, and we're gonna continue to fight for every dollar, whether it's with the state. Our lobbying teams are down there working. If the Senate side of the budget fully passes, we'll be looking at support cap, and we'll be able to do other things. So, I'll just put out here, while I know everyone's talking about next year's budget, I'm the one who always says, well, if we do get more money this year, you know, there are wish lists, and the board will look at spending those extra monies. If the Senate side passes, that'll be support caps being lifted. If support caps being lifted means we can hire more counselors, we can get to that 250 to 1 ratio, we can hire more of the instructional coaches, we need math, science, reading, and in our special ed, you know, we can, all of those things, by the way, all of these things that I'm saying are in our strategic plan, nothing I'm asking for is over and above or outside of the strategic plan effort. So, those are great things, and then more money into extracurriculars as well. So, that's all I have to say. Again, I want to thank everyone who's, who's, you know, done the hard work. At this point, we will now move around. If members have amendments or motions they'd like to mark up tonight, we'll start with Mr. Wilk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna make the motion to remove the board's salary increase for the fiscal year 20-
Do you have a second for that?
Mr. Chairman, I second.
Any discussion? Ms. Williams?
Thank you. I just want the board members to know that the last salary increase that we had, I think, was the first in a decade for the board, and I also want the public to understand, I think, like, the second longest serving here at this moment in time. This, when, when we first started, this truly was a part-time job. Most of us showed up for meetings, we conversated in between time, and that was it. It is now an expectation, I believe, from most of our constituents, and just simply with the new administration and how we work together, it has morphed into almost a full-time position. I also want the public to understand that we don't see that money, this board. So, normally, what happens is in, there's a, a public outcry because funding for the board, but I also want the public to understand, that's not our, for us, that's for whoever sits in these seats after November. And I think it's really important that this board be mindful, that that's to take care of those people, and the expectation of the amount of hours and time and money that comes with this position, and what it would continue to look like in the future. So, I'd hate for us to short the next people sitting in this seat, because it's no longer a part-time position, and it is a lot of work that gets done. So, depending on how you vote, that's just my two cents. I'm always an equity person. I don't, I don't believe in shortchanging anyone if we can help it.
Ms. Jessie?
You know, when I was a principal, I would always say things like, I could do this job for nothing, and my husband would say, no, she wouldn't, no, she can't, but I would. And I think that we're looking through the lenses of us as middle-class people. We can afford not to have a salary, many of us on this board, and I think that we want to encourage people to join this board where the salaries are at a, at a rate that is competitive, competitive. I don't know how this got, I'd like to have, I don't know if it's a time to ask for a discussion on why this was put into, I didn't put this in. Who, who was the person that put this particular item on the budget? Was it you, Dr. Mc, Dr.?
It's called the Superintendent's Proposed Budget, but yes, I did ask that the-
Okay.
Raise go in. I know our Board of County Supervisors have put in for a raise, I know other regional leaders in Fairfax have, and, you know, I don't think it's a lot of money, so I, I ask to be put in. I think it's like about $3,000 a person.
And how competitive are we? How, how competitive are we? I, I'm sorry, I, I just have to ask questions about this.
We, we can, I can get that information for you, if you want to table this, we can get the information for you. I know Fairfax and Arlington are higher than us.
They make about 50, and they have staff.
And they have, they have staff. So, we, you know, we've, we've run a tight ship, we do a lot of our own work compared to other school divisions our size.
I, when I came on this board, I, I think I did some visits, but now, I look, I can't keep up with, with my calendar, and every day I'm going somewhere. And I think to, I think that we really need to look at ourselves as professionals, and it's not necessarily about money, but I think it is a professional position, and I, I think we need to look at upcoming members and adding people on this board who maybe the salary would be something that would enhance them in the lower-income areas, who salaries are not what we have in our, in our retirements and whatever. So, for that reason, I will not vote to remove it.
It's, just wanted to add some things, and kind of some of the stuff we've said. It's, it's not that I don't think it's deserved or warranted, I just look at certain things that I think would be more helpful, stuff that kind of has already kind of come up, like more stuff that could help more in community engagement. We have three phenomenal people in our clerks office, but we could use another one, too, to better support our constituents. As we were talking about, the calendars themselves cause just trying to coordinate events and stuff like that, and our neighbors to the north have three times the staff in, like, their board office. Other areas, I think, could be useful. Not everyone gets emails. We don't get postage to mail out newsletters, like the B O C S, an annual newsletter from their board member or something like that. That could be beneficial for community engagement. We also, in the past, had used to have some type of stipend as board members to recognize either teachers or students or something in our district, whether it's a plaque or something, that we had a little bit more discretion on, and these are areas that I think would be helpful as a board member or the future board, to have resources more to engage with their community for the purpose of their constituents. Those are just my thoughts.
Ms. Argarpur?
Thank you, Dr. Latif. I, I actually was, my thinking's a lot like Mr. Wilk's. Additionally, because there is uncertainty in the budget right now, I am not comfortable putting myself into a bucket of, I get something before we're sure with what we're doing with our staff. It's, it's, and this isn't a competitive salary. We don't live in Fairfax, we can't run for Fairfax as school board, so this is just fundamentally different. I'm, it's just me being me. But I, but Mr. Wilk is correct, we, we don't have, we just got a, a little bit of an expansion on our staff here. I've had constituents say, can I meet you at your office hours? They are surprised my office is wherever I'm standing at the moment. It is a little bit harder to make sure you're communicating with people, because I don't have anybody, I can easily ask, because they're doing stuff for all of us. So, I, I think more support in the office is where it's needed.
I wanted to add, may I add something? In my comments on the budget, I said that if there's a reduction, I think that we should not get that raise, but I, I think that if the budget, it depends on the budget. So, I think I would rather wait and see what the budget is going to, but I think you know my, my position. I think it was written.
The motion's on the table at this time, Ms. Jessie, so unless you make a different motion to table it, then for now, we'll vote on this motion as it is. Ms., Ms. Jackson?
Try again. I'm currently hesitant to vote for this, but with the full understanding that this has been a full-time job. However, I would support tabling this, so if I could, I can make a motion because of the budget uncertainty, and because I believe that both Ms. Jessie and Mr. Wilk have raised valid points, and there may be a compromise in there. So, that would be what I would offer, is possibly to table it.
Make an affirmative amendment?
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's- It's a straw poll, so it's not a formal meeting. So, do you want to withdraw your motion and then make a-
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Wilk withdraws a motion. Somebody want to make a motion to table? So, I'll motion that we table this for discussion at the next meeting, or, and further, when, when we come back to do the final budget after the General Assembly passes. How would you like to do this?
I second that.
Okay. Any discussion on tabling it? Okay. All in favor of tabling the salary increase for the school board for further discussion, either at the next week's meeting or when we get more information? And after research? All in favor? It looks unanimous. Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Wilk. Excellent work. Good work. Outstanding. We'll go to Ms. Jessie next? Okay.
I have no additions. I have no amendments or additions, thank you.
Okay, great, Ms. Jessie. Ms., Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the new process, all of the things that I have advocated for and continue to advocate for are in the budget or up for discussion for next year.
Ms. Argarpur?
I have no additions.
Ms. Jackson?
I have no further additions, I just appreciate the collaboration. Thank you.
Ms. Wall?
I, well, I have no further additions to this budget, I wish to advocate for three future things if we were to come up with additional funds, like, depending on how things shake out with the state, or for next year's budget. My first ask would be the current counselor ratio, I think, is 301, at least at the high school. And so, I believe, I would like to see that brought down to 250 to 1, which I think is the ASC ratio. So, I don't know what it would take to get us to that goal, but even if we could move it a little bit to, like, 275 to 1, I think the school counselors, especially in the high school level, are really important because they have that personal relationship with the kids. My second ask would be that we look at the funding per pupil for our ESAL students, especially at the high school level, because our ESAL students at the high school level have multiple classes, they take, you know, seven different classes, and so, that's a lot of work for the ESAL teachers. And I don't know if the per pupil amount is adequate, but I believe it might not be at the high school level. And the third would be, I understand that the prices for graduation have gone up a lot, like, the rental of facilities like Jiffy Lube Live, I believe, have gone up quite a bit from, like, $5,000 or something. This is what, historically, I think it was a lot less, and now it's like $30,000 or something like that. So, that comes out currently out of a school's budget, but I'd like to maybe take a look. It's not a big amount, but it's kind of a big amount, I mean, for a school. So, those are just three things that I would advocate for. I'm sure others have good ideas as well, but my additions. Thank you.
Okay, I have no further additions. Mr. Wilk? Anymore? You want to go around again? Are we good?
No.
Okay. If, I have no further recommendations for markup, at this time, I'll ask that the Prince William, so at this point, we will, again, this is non-binding, ask the board members at this point, so next week, we'll be bringing the budget for a full vote. Obviously, any, anything can happen in between now and then, if there's any changes, we'll make revisions to the budget, but at this point, I'd like to get a straw vote, so I understand where the board members are, and so, at this point, I move that the Prince William County School Board accept the fiscal 2024 budget as presented in this evening's work session and final markup. Do I have a second for that? Okay. And any, all in favor? Hands up.
Non-binding.
Non-binding, it's a straw vote. Yeah, straw vote. And as opposed, none. Okay, so, seeing there's no major objections to the budget, at this point, we expect that the budget that comes to the board, the full board meeting next week, will be as proposed, provided there's any changes from the state, you know, in the meantime. And again, it's, it's non-binding, but if board members still have more changes that they offer, they can certainly offer them at that point, but we're hoping that there won't be any major ones. Okay. So, there's no changes.
Doctor, may I, may I make a comment?
Yeah, Ms. Jessie, sure.
If we're voting to leave this budget meeting, it has to be the fastest time I've ever seen. I've been on this board the longest, and I've been in long meetings. I want to congratulate you, because this has never happened. I think it's an historical event. Maybe this is your, this is Women's Week, this is Women's Month, right?
Happy International Women's Day.
Yes, you're doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Okay, at this point, I think I'm at the point where we do, the school board does have to go into closed session, is that where I'm at? Okay. So, we, I need a recommendation, I need a motion, Ms. Wall.
Mr. Chairman, I- Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711 and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session to discuss with legal counsel and staff members the acquisition of real property for a high school Woodbridge area, which is the-
and 2.2-3712, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session to discuss with legal counsel and staff members the acquisition of real property for a high school Woodbridge area, which is the subject of litigation pending within Prince William County Circuit Court, and where briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and litigating posture of P W C S pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A, 3, and A7.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Ms. Jackson seconds, motion, any discussion? Okay. All in favor moving to closed session? Signal, hand, eye? Okay, any opposed? No. At this point, the Prince William County School Board will move into closed session and return in approximately 30 minutes. Prince William County School Board now returning open session from closed session. Moving on to closed session certification, motions in order, Mr. Wall.
Mr. Chairman, I move that pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of March 8, 2023, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the School Board.
I'll, do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Zargarpur seconds, any discussion? Please vote. All in favor? Aye? Okay, so that votes, I think that's six, I'm abstaining, because I wasn't in closed session, so I can't, I don't know the answer. Yeah. Yeah. All right, moving on to the next motion, closed session, action item, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Wall.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Prince William County School Board authorize legal counsel to make a pre-trial settlement offer in the amount discussed in our closed meeting to the landowners in the condemnation litigation set for trial in Prince William County Circuit Court on March 13, 2023, and also authorize the chairman-at-large and the clerk to execute any necessary documents subject to approval as to form by division counsel.
Do I have a second? I have one question on this, Wade, I wasn't in closed session, but since I wasn't in closed session, do I authorize, do I sign the documents, or does the vice chair sign the documents? Does it matter? Can you just look into that?
I can. If you want to just change it, if you want to change the motion to authorize the vice chair.
The vice chair.
Why don't you do that?
Anybody have any opposition to that? Because I wasn't in the meeting, I won't be signing these documents.
I can say, I move.
So there's no, so we'll just substitute chairman for vice chair. Okay? No opposition, that will be accepted. Okay. All in favor of this motion? Aye? Okay, that will be six to pass and one abstention. Okay, thank you all, that being no further business in front of this board, we will call this meeting adjourned.